And it'll probably, it might not work. Here I did it again.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I gotta learn how to do this. There, go ahead, deputy.
Jeff, just a general comment. I've gone through the, your response a couple of times and really like what you have written for us to recommend. And we agree with, or you agree, we agree with a lot of the recommendations. If we're to give the municipal affairs a response, how, have you thought about how you're gonna respond based on your discussion with us? Like, I want them to take some of your recommendations seriously and I want them to, I want us to succeed, I want you to succeed with some of your suggestions. And I'm just curious, is there some, different than what they've suggested that they would accept? And then there are some others that they're going to say no to right away? Doesn't relate directly to recommendation thirty or thirty-one or thirty-two. But when we respond, how are you going to word the response? And I understand your last point on page thirty, forty, thirty-three. I'm just, I just want us to succeed and show some real leadership so that the, we'll get, you'll get support from the other municipal units that are grappling with problems also. Just curious.
So, so the process is that we'll submit our response to UNSM. UNSM will, will share it on their website so all municipalities can go and see what every municipality has responded. You know, we can circulate our response more broadly than that, more directly to, to other municipal units. The, the politics of the, of the policy is, is not, is not a, a part of this that, that I think I'm as directly involved in as, as you folks. You know, I will, what I'm trying to do is inform you, give you what I think are some perspectives on these recommendations that, that can help solve the long-term problems that exist with, with municipalities. I think if we, if we restructure, if we, you know, do amalgamations and dissolutions and we don't address issues like environmental regulation and infrastructure costs and managing those, we'll be back, you know, we'll be back, or someone will be back in the future, in not too many years, discussing municipal viability unless the bigger issues are tackled. You know, the, the discussion will continue. It's been ongoing since, well, since the Graham Commission and before that surely because the Graham Commission wasn't, wasn't established in the mid-seventies just out of the blue, right? There was, there's been an issue for forty to fifty years. So I think, what I hope is, is that if you believe, whatever you believe is the right way to go, whether it's the original fiscal review report, if you stand behind it and you want to see it implemented, is that you, you advocate that the minister implement it, all of it. If you believe there are parts of it that could be done better, could be done in line with what, what I'm suggesting, then I, then I hope you advocate that. But if we sit back and just hope they do the right thing, I think it's a bit of a long shot. I hope, I hope we try to engage other towns and other municipalities to see that the issue won't be resolved easily and that we don't want to be back talking about this in a few years and, and urge the government to take bold action. You know, the minister talks about the Ivony Report every time he speaks. He's a big fan of, of a new future for Nova Scotia and bold action and this just gives him some opportunity really at his government, you know, the McNeil government a chance to start to chart a different course.
Go ahead, deputy.
One final comment and a teasing comment to everybody in the room, in a way. If governments, municipal governments can't afford, were not viable within reason, do we, is Nova Scotia gonna lose all municipal units and we just have one government of the day rule the province, looking after both municipal and provincial regulations?
Well, it, you know, I mean, it's a, what, what the end game is, is anybody's guess because, you know, municipalities, just changing the boundaries and not addressing the bigger issues, I think is gonna lead to, you know, there might be thirty municipalities in a few years or there might be twenty. Whatever the number is, if you don't, if you, if you leave the responsibilities the way they are for, for roads being the big issue, if you don't address regulation and the impacts on municipalities, all those costs eventually are gonna come back to the province. The municipalities are creatures of the province. They're created under provincial legislation, not under the Constitution of Canada. And so, we, we are what they make us and we do what they tell us, or we do what they tell us. And, and, you know, what the end game is, unless they fix some of the, some of the problems that exist, you'll be, you might have twenty municipalities and you'll still be talking about viability if you don't change some of the, some of the responsibilities and regulations.
So we're, so we're not going to have, this is just a guess. There's thirty towns, there aren't going to be thirty replies like this. I can almost guarantee that. There may be three, okay? So, so given that, I, I think what we have to say is really, it's every time the deputy's light goes on, the system shuts down. That's how much power he has. Or electric field or something, I'm not sure. So, so, so our voice, I think our voice will not only be heard, but I think it already has. So, go, go ahead.
And it, you know, Jim, that's a, a good point because you see what's going on in Hansport, Bridgetown, what happened up in Kanso. But I was talking at the UNSM there, myself and Councilman Kaiser were talking at the UNSM to one of the guys from the HRM Halifax. They're still having problems after, when did they?
Twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago. They're still having problems with area rates. They haven't got that figured out yet. Here we are, twenty years down the road where everything should be worked out and things, you know, people use Queens as a template for municipal amalgamation.
Not always.
You want to talk to some of those guys from Queens County. It ain't, it ain't a bed of roses down there and there's the, a big disparity between Caledonia, Greenfields and, and the actual town of Liverpool itself. They're still, they're still grappling with some issues there and there's some big issues there, you know, and so to say that amalgamation is the answer to everything, it's shared services. It's a bigger voice, right? And, and the more shared services we do, and every time you talk to Alain Kenny and, you know, we're trying to do the same thing with the REN, it's imperative on us again to, to share more services, but amalgamation, to say amalgamation, it's like communism. It's great in theory but never works in practicality, right? So, but to, and you're gonna be right because I think we're gonna be the, probably the most comprehensive response to these recommendations, I think is gonna be coming from the town of Yarmouth.
And I already had the chat for what's, to say, they're on their way. So they know it's at least thirty-three pages. We good? Well, I told, I told the minister it was thirty-three pages. Okay. Are we good on that?
Yes. Okay, so recommendations thirty-one and thirty-two, quickly. New regulations should always have clear and measurable outcomes. They should include sunsetting provisions and they should be regularly reviewed for efficiency and effectiveness. And number thirty-two, the departments working on new regulations for municipalities must engage with the Department of Municipal Affairs to determine the total cumulative impact of all provincially and federally imposed municipal regulations. To support this work, the Department of Municipal Affairs will collect on an annual basis the economic and fiscal analysis conducted for all proposed and existing major regulations imposed on municipalities, and I recommend we support those. Recommendation thirty-three, several existing regulations, specifically the solid waste diversion and the CCME wastewater regulations of which we just spoke, should be set aside until a full economic and fiscal analysis can be completed. And this recommendation, as you see on the slide, is in a different color because this one has, it was requested or directed by government that this not be put out for consultation. They felt because this involved federal regulation that it was beyond their scope. However, I believe we should advise on this one that the province needs to advocate and resist on our behalf. Higher debt loads, higher operating costs and higher taxes are not the mantra of the one Nova Scotia report, but will be the result of those policies. Recommendation thirty-four, also not out for consultation. Subsequently, subsequently and going forward, any new regulations should not move forward unless municipal, provincial, federal governments have agreed, have agreement on how they will be funded. And this sounds very much like a recommendation we have in an earlier response, but again, this isn't out for consultation because it involves federal government. The province felt it was beyond their mandate. Nonetheless, we'll provide a response and, and so, it's been said many times, the first lesson of economics is scarcity. There's never enough of anything to fully satisfy all those that want it. And Thomas Sowell said, "The first lesson of politics is to forget the first lesson of economics." In other words, when the federal government comes up with these regulations around environment, there's no thought to how it'll be paid for. There's, there's not enough thought. If there was full thought, full consideration of how the thirty-four million dollars would come, be, be provided for the town of Yarmouth, we'd already know that. But instead, they've just simply looked at what, at what, what sounds good, what the science says is good, without really considering those fifteen parts per million will cost thirty-four million dollars in the town of Yarmouth. So, the, the economics of the situation has to be considered and, and should, should contribute to the, to the, I guess, the future of where these regulations go. And again, I've, I've said here and I've, I've said a few minutes ago, is the province has reviewed this recommendation from, have removed it from consideration. Recommendation thirty-five, alternate service delivery mechanism, yep, sir.
Go ahead.
Can I just ask one question on that? When they, when they make these regulations, now, is this coming from the province or is it coming from the federal government? Because if it's coming from the province, it's one thing, but if it's coming from the federal government, it's another thing. And who should be, who should be the person that should be responding to this? It should be more provincial, even though it's, it's at a municipal level. We should have a strong minister that should be really, even though we're, we're recommending that they don't do this, but they should be more on the ball about this than perhaps that they already, maybe they are, maybe they're not, I don't know. But isn't this a, more of a provincial level than a, than a municipal level to be arguing this point?
So, the wastewater regulations come from the CCME, which is the Canadian Councils of the Ministers of Environment. So that involves your provincial minister of environment, but it's an agreement or agreed to at a, at a federal level among ministers of environment. So, the province has had a hand in this and has a hand in, or at least that's the way it appears to be. Appears there's a structure there into which the province can have, can have a voice on these regulations. And so, I don't know when these were passed. I don't know that information. You know, I don't, I don't know who came up with the regu, with the twenty-five parts per million, if that was, if that was the federal Department of Environment or if that was a negotiated level among the, the ministers. But in any case, it is what it is. That is currently where it stands and, you know, there may be, there may be particular circumstances where treatment plants are spewing untreated wastewater into, into water courses and obviously those need to be addressed. And, you know, our own Halifax Regional Municipality has recently upgraded their wastewater treatment to, to address their issue. And, and that, that should happen. But in cases like the town of Yarmouth where we are, we are within fifteen parts per million of the regulation that will be required in twenty-five years' time, it seems, seems a little, a little heavy-handed and to not provide some, some level of variance or reasonableness around, you know, how close you are and is it worth thirty-four million dollars for fifteen parts per million? And, and I don't know what the science is on that, but it sounds, I could give you a list of things we could spend thirty-four million dollars on. You know, I'm sure you could come up with a list. And every citizen could come up with a list, including their own pocket, they'd like to keep that money in. So it is, it is, to answer your question, it is both jointly federal and provincial. So recommendation thirty-five deals with alternate service delivery mechanisms, including shared services models, must be considered by municipalities and the province as a means to improve efficiencies where possible. And I said in our response that we support and exemplify this recommendation. The town's task force specifically recommended a reward system to support intermunicipal cooperation and that has not materialized, but it was a recommendation of the town's task force from two thousand twelve.
Go ahead. Thank you, Your Worship. What type of reward? What form would that take?
Money. I mean, that's, that's, that's the reward that motivates the best. So, so what I talked about-
In what formula would they-
Okay, so what I talked about earlier in the recommendations, we talked about equalization, the subsidy that the province provides to municipalities that are struggling or can't afford the services at, at the level that, that others perhaps can. What I recommended at that time is that, is that rather than providing a subsidy, because subsidies generally don't work, is to provide an incentive-based set of programs. So, so if you were sitting at the provincial Department of Municipal Affairs, there might be a list of things you'd like to see municipalities do around better governance or around better financial management. And if you make those things clear and you say, "If you do that, we will, we will reward you with X number of dollars towards, towards your, your budget." So, as an example, one of the things we're very proud of is the fact that we fund our amortization. What if the province said to those municipalities that fund your amortization, there will be a, a, a reward? And it might be a percentage of that amount of money that would be granted to you by the province when you fully fund, every year you fully fund. So it creates an incentive. So let's say, let's say that amounted to three hundred thousand dollars to the town of Yarmouth. And let's suppose that we were funding our amortization fifty percent. So that would be eight hundred out of one point six million. If we fund the other eight hundred thousand, we're gonna get three hundred thousand from the province. So, there's, there's a payback for, for increasing the tax rate. There's a, there's a, there's a rationale that you could take to the taxpayer and say, "We're not only doing the right thing, but we're getting a reward for doing it as well. We're leveraging your tax dollars." So, that's, that's a lot different than a subsidy which says, "We can't afford it. When we do things better, we're gonna get less of it." But, that's sort of the-
Speaks to, to the fairness piece for me as well. You know, when you're doing something right, you get, not that you need to be rewarded, you're doing it right. I mean, we maintain what we maintain and it's, and it's great to be in Yarmouth because, because we do it right. But, but the fairness piece, when, when you discuss with, you know, with other, other municipalities, sometimes the fairness piece takes on a different persona, which is, well, fair is fair, we can't, so can you help us? There's a subsidy. But-
Yes.
But in this case, because you're doing it right, you set the example and you're rewarded for it. And again, I mean, it's not about the reward, it's about, it's about trying to get everybody to raise the bar to, to the right level. It makes a, makes a difference.
Yeah, and I think the same situation, Jeff, is five or six years ago. We had a situation with the Department of Tourism when it came to funding a project that we're doing. Remember, they said we had an unfair advantage because the previous administration had got the, the room levy tax going and there was quite a consternation, you know, with some of the properties about, you know, how fair this tax was. But when we're starting to use it and starting to generate some money and starting to leverage that money, like Jeff said, so here we are, we've got all the property owners on board, the thing was finally starting to work, we had a good working group, we go to leverage some money, the governor said, "Oh, you guys, you guys got an unfair advantage because you guys are working together and you have too much money." So here you are, you're doing the right thing, you're pulling all the right levers, you're getting everybody on board and then they penalize you for working together. So that's, you know, and it wasn't a project, I don't think it was that, that big in scope, but it was just the saying that you guys have an unfair advantage.
I didn't know that.
It's been five years ago or so.
It was, it was, it was just as you just described it, everybody, every bit as ridiculous as you just explained it.
Yeah.
We had an opportunity to take basically a hundred thousand dollars, I believe it was, of money that, that our businesses had contributed through a room levy tax and leveraged it up with the province and really drive some tourism initiatives in Yarmouth County. And, and it was like, well, if we give one to you, we have to give one to everyone. Well, sure, if they do the right thing, means do it. And, and the Canadian, right, soon, soon after the town, I mean, within a month or so after the town implemented that room levy, I went to a tourism meeting in, at White Point, as, as it turns out, and the president from the Canadian Tourism Association, Canadian, Canadian Tourism Association, we'll say, I'm not sure that's the proper name, but spoke keynote speaker and spoke specifically about room levies and that that was, that was the, the absolute right way to go. And here we are, we, we went out, got ahead of it a little bit in this end of the province, put it in place, we had the participation of our, of our businesses and we still have. And the province and through, through Destination Southwest would not recognize that or would not allow us to leverage that to, to the advantage of the local tourism industry.
It's not gonna happen with this. I can't see that happening with, yeah. Go ahead.
Recommendation thirty-six, the province, the Association of Municipal Administrators in Nova Scotia and UNSM should work together to develop, to develop a provincial municipal strategic plan to determine the priority areas for cooperative initiatives, i.e. town task force implementation, MGA review, Elections Act review, et cetera. And, so what, what it basically says is the three organizations, the province, AMANs and UNSM should work together with, with a plan to work together and we support that. The province, municipality, recommendation thirty-seven, the province and municipality should establish a staff-level roundtable to discuss municipal issues and to provide an ongoing venue for continuous dialogue and collaboration. This roundtable should encourage two-way communication around issues that impact the province and municipalities. Of course, we support that. The province, the Association of Municipal Administrators and UNSM should develop a province-wide strategy for addressing asset management in Nova Scotia. A key part of this strategy would include an inventory of assets throughout the province to identify the highest priority for investment. This should be identified as a priority in the provincial municipal strategic plan and should build on the asset management program currently being developed by HRM. We support that. The AMA, UNSM and Municipal Affairs staff should continue to collaborate on education and training through the AMANs Education Committee. This committee should complete, implement and continuously evaluate the recommendations and the current education and training strategy for municipal employees and elected officials and should also continue to publish a joint training calendar. We support that. Some of these recommendations towards the end of the report are, compared to some of the others, very small issues. You know, that we should continue to work together on education of municipal employees and, and elected officials compared to dealing with environmental regulation, amalgamation, equalization, it's a very small issue.
I think AMA just asked me to sit on one of those.
Yes, you, you and I both are gonna be involved in, in the educate-
Developing leadership training modules.
Yes, yeah. The province should explore opportunities for staff secondments to help with municipal resource issues and succession planning. And we support that. Municipal Affairs should undertake an organizational review to determine if the existing structure best meets the needs of both the department and municipal partners. In particular, the role, area of expertise and structure of the municipal advisor service should be reviewed. And so I said to that, that we agreed with that, we need to set service standards and be prepared to review. So one of the things that was talked about in the, in the consultation here in Yarmouth was, as opposed to having geogra, what we have right now, I gather, is geographic representation of these municipal advisors. Each has a region they're responsible for. And what was talked about in the consultation was, rather than doing it that way, why not have subject matter experts? So maybe you'd have a municipal advisor who's a subject matter expert in finance, one in governance, one perhaps in, in land use planning or in engineering of municipal services. So that if we had a question, if the town of Yarmouth had a question, it would not necessarily go to the one individual goes to now and then he has to fan out within the organization to find the answer. But rather, we would go, if it was a planning question, we would go to the advisor who is the subject matter expert on planning. That was received quite well at the, at the consultation. I saw some, some heads nodding. And I kind of, to be honest, I, I, all I could think about when I, when I heard that discussion happening was our REN. Because when we talked about establishing the, the regional enterprise network, the same kind of discussion was, was talked about is, do we need economic development officers in each county in the REN or do we need industry experts co-located or does it matter where they're located? As long as we have industry experts who can help to drive the strategy of the, of the regional enterprise network. And what happened in that case is that we all agreed that they should, it should be geographic, that we need to make sure these people are in our community. And so, this recommendation of subject matter experts for the, for Department of Municipal Affairs, rather than regional representation, you're giving up something in exchange for something else. And I guess the question, it's a value question to you folks, is, is it a fair exchange? From my perspective, if you ask me, and it's right there on the slide, I agree. I agree that, that we're probably better off to have a, a pool of, of experts that, that we can tap into on your behalf as needed, as opposed to having a, a, a group of, I don't wanna diminish their role, but people who just simply receive questions and then have to go fetch answers. You know, if we could have people who were subject matter experts, I think the resources would be, would be well-used. And some of those people frankly have been subject matter experts. Stephen Feast was a municipal advisor. He was, he comes from a planning background. Paul Wills was a municipal advisor, very strong in finance and, and you know, when our experience has been, when we've had questions in those realms, our own municipal advisor would, would go to those people. The change here would be, we could just go to them directly. All good? Forty-two, we're almost there. There's only forty-three of these. Forty-two. Municipal Affairs should provide an organizational chart, including roles and contact information for all Department of Municipal Affairs staff for use by municipalities. Yeah, we agree. And number forty-three. Municipal Affairs should develop new processes for developing and sharing information municipalities. Based on priority share, sorry, priority areas identified through the provincial municipal strategic plan, the department should work with municipalities to produce and share best practices, materials, policies, data analysis, et cetera. Municipal Affairs should identify methods for sharing the analysis and finding from the data municipalities provides to the division through a system such as a data portal. Municipal Affairs should also develop a more friendly, user-friendly- Municipal Affairs should also develop a more friendly, user-friendly financial reporting system to improve and expedite the financial reporting process. They have a huge amount of data at Municipal Affairs, and they've got some very capable people there that do analysis. And through this process, we've been able to tap into some of that and realize, you know, just exactly what the capability is. And as I said, I think earlier on Thursday in this presentation, we, we had to keep asking for data, asking for data, so that we could do our own analysis and understand, first of all, the recommendations in the report, and second of all, what appropriate responses might be. That data should be readily available through a portal that any municipality, any CAO, any director of finance, or any counselor frankly, can tap into and have a look at, at these situations. Because when you start to look at, when you start to look at data, sometimes the ideas, the ideas start to, start to cause conversations to happen. We also think Municipal Affairs ought to do a better job of being a, a clearinghouse for policies, bylaws, those sorts of governance strategic plans, those kinds of governance documents that, that municipalities have. Final thoughts. Question, it's really a question is, is whether this process is about winners and losers or whether it's about fairness and viability. And at the outset, it was, it was to be about fairness and viability, but I think through the process that occurred, I think it became a little bit about winners and losers. Because all sides were represented on the, on the working group that worked on the fiscal review report, and the negotiation, the politics happened with, within that group. But if it's really about fairness and viability, I think, I think it's important that the different sides be clear what their perspective is, that ideas such as the ones that we've provided in, in this report and presentation are at least out there for discussion. And if it's about viability, it can't be about Band-Aids, it can't be about short-term solutions. Can I just speak briefly about what I saw in the paper this morning?
Absolutely.
Bridgetown received, or is going to receive, a couple million dollars as, as a part of the process around dissolution. Well, so they're in their hearings this week, and if they dissolve, they're going to receive, I think it's two point five million towards the roads cost. Think about what's going on on Green Street right now, okay? Green Street is, is the street's been torn up, storm of water and sanitary sewer been put in. Jerry, the price on that is about seven hundred thousand?
Close to that, yeah.
So that little piece of street to rebuild the infrastructure, seven hundred thousand. The province is putting two point five million into the town of Bridgetown to settle up the, the roads and, and infrastructure issue as they dissolve into the county of Annapolis. Sounds like a lot of money today, but it's, it's three green streets, and it won't be long before the county of Annapolis is wrestling with the infrastructure needs in that area of the county. It will no longer be a separate corporate town. And the, the comment in the Chronicle was, was that, you know, they want to deal with the perception that taxpayers in the county would perceive their taxes going up in the future as a result of Bridgetown. And I can almost guarantee you, if they don't fix the bigger issue, that two point five million is, is chicken feed to, to what they're going to be facing there. So I guess it, I saw that clearly as a two point five million dollar Band-Aid on a bigger issue that needs a, needs a harder look. And, you know, that, that's, that's kind of status quo, that's the way things have been done, and there needs to be a different approach. I hope, I guess I hope that if, if you agree with some of the stuff in this, in this presentation that will make a contribution to the conversation provincially, I'm sure some people will, will become very defensive. People who benefit currently through the status quo will not want change. It will be difficult, no matter what happens. For the minister, he's got some hard, some hard decisions ahead of him with the fiscal review report. Even as it is, there are some things there that he's going to have some difficulty with politically, I would think. In some of these recommendations and responses, if he were to even consider these, they would be that much more difficult because the changes that we're proposing are a little more far-reaching and a little bolder. So a, as I say, I hope we contribute to the conversation. And the time to absorb all of this, the minister was asked at the UNSM if, if, if he really thought that sixty days was long enough. And he, he indicated that it was, and, and I have to say fairness that it both was and it wasn't. It's long enough if you're, if you're not going to do a deep dive into his, into the report, and you're not going to try and provide any of your own analysis and thoughtful response. I mean, seven days is long enough if you're just going to, to accept it. But if you're really going to dig into these issues and try and understand them and try and come up with, with alternatives, sixty days is not a lot of time. But anyway, it, it is what it is, and it'll be interesting to see where it goes. But what I need from you folks, I see a couple lights flashing, but what I need from you folks, our deadline is, is December eleventh. We have a council meeting, and I want to have a document in front of you that, that reflects what you're willing to stand behind as the perspective from the town of Yarmouth. So I'll stop there.
Okay. Deputy?
Jeff, you may remember I asked you if, if the fifteenth, eleventh or fifteenth of December, when we're in the October session, was long enough for you to give a response, and you certainly made it. I didn't realize all the implications, and I would expect that you would realize it more than I would, but I'm, I'm in support of all of your recommendations generally. I, I don't see how I could disagree with you on any of them. Politically, as I said earlier, I want very much, I want you, us to have an impact on UNSM and, and with, based on your response. And so I, I, I don't know, how, how are you going to present it so that some of us, some of them are going, we're going to agree on a portion of them, perhaps fifteen of them, and with some comment, but then, then the other, other number of them, they're real changes, thought-provoking changes. And I don't want them to say no, I want them to think about it themselves. Maybe one of the suggestions is that other municipal units, having seen our response, they could, they might like to have more time to do an in-depth analysis also. Thank, thank you.
Thank you, deputy. Counselor Dawes?
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, we could go back to recommendation number forty-three, please, the very last line. Municipal Affairs should also develop a more user-friendly financial reporting system to improve and expedite the financial reporting process. I agree, but my mind goes in different directions, and mine took me to the question of this financial reporting system. Would it suffice just for that system to be in, with them alone, or that should communicate with the rest of us? And if so, is that, should that, or is that going to be compatible with each individual municipal record, uh, uh, financial reporting system? Because we just bought one.
Go ahead.
Okay, so what that's referring to is, twice a year, our finance department, I think our director does this himself personally, has to go on to a municipal, to a, to a, I haven't actually watched it do this, so I don't know if it's, if it's using a, a template that's downloaded, or if you go on to a, a web portal.
A portal.
A portal. And so what, what that is, is there's, we, Jerry has to take our, our budget and input all those numbers in somewhat different format into a provincial system. So he has to combine some numbers, make sure he puts them in the right places, so, and every municipality has to do this. There is no, there is one portal, but there are many different forms that our budgets take. So for instance, we create a line item in our budget for Christmas promotions, that doesn't exist in the portal, so Jerry has to, has to collapse that into some other broader categories. So there's quite a bit of administrative work there to, to make sure that everything is, is in the right, in the right box. The other one that he does is the financial information return. So once we get our audited statements, again, he goes back into a portal and plugs the numbers in. This might surprise you, is, is that not every municipal audit, set of financial statements, audit report looks exactly the same, right? And, yeah, it's, it's both surprising and disappointing really to me, is that, is that the province, who, who tells us what to do, tells us how to do it, where our limits and authorities are, has the authority to tell us what our financial reports have to look like. And they haven't, and so you have, they're somewhat different, and again, Jerry has to plug the numbers into the portal. What this line is about, and this, this really comes from staff, is, is that that process needs to be improved because I think it consumes far more time than it necessarily should.
Well, that's what I was thinking, too, because you thought you may have a, and I'm going to be very crude about this, an AC system here with DCs out, out of municipalities, and who knows how many variations of the DCs are out there.
Yep.
Would it not, am I supposed to be on?
Yes.
Does it?
If not, it would make sense to me if all levels, if all of the municipalities were on the same system, so that everyone, everyone could communicate.
At least that we're using the same, the same templates, the same structure in our budgeting and in our financial reporting. So that it wouldn't matter if you're on, on, you know, Town Suite, or SAP, or Diamond Financial System, you press a button and your, your data goes in the same format to a provincial repository where they, they simply receive it.
That would be good, yes.
And you're able to compare it and do some analysis. I worked, just prior to this job, I worked for Dalhousie for a couple of years on a project, and it was interesting, it was an interesting contrast in budgeting because, you know, I had a project, it was unique, they hadn't done a project like my project ever before, and so I wanted to set up, you know, a budget that reflected what I was doing. I was given about fifteen different categories, here they are, fit whatever you want into them, but those are the categories, and we're not changing the names. So it would, you know, it'd be, you know, and this is, so the university has lots of, lots of different areas of interest and projects and whatnot, but it, they have a very structured way of doing their, their budgeting and financial reporting. And I think municipalities are not as diverse as municipal, as university departments and research that goes on there. It'd be pretty easy to come up with a standard set of, of line items for municipal budgets and, and a pretty standard way of reporting municipal financial reports, I would think.
Thank you, your worship. Jeff, it's been, it's been enlightening to see how you did respond to this, and as I said before, how much work you and your staff has put into this. It's great. I, I, I fully support what you've, your responses that you, that you gave. But I would say that the way government usually operates, and I don't know this for a fact, but I would dare say that the minister has already have, has a plan in place, and I would dare say he would be taking the information, which this is great information, and look at it and through all the other municipal units, and see in his master plan if any of this fits in place. And to better it, he's looking at what he can use for betterment or to make things almost as, almost as close as to what he has. But I would say the sixty days that he has in place is because he already has a plan. Whether it's a good one or a bad one, we won't know. But I'd, I'd like to think that what we, we're offering for recommendations is the way to go and the way we should go. My question also to you is, do you know, do our other municipal, our sister municipalities, do they have their plans in place? And if yes, have you seen them, have you looked at them? And if not, should it be, would it be a good exercise to show them our plan and just let them have a brief look? The CEOs, that's who I'm talking about, and anybody else that you think could be interested. Because if we show strength by numbers, sometimes it's usually the best way to go. And, you know, if you show strength by numbers, a force, by numbers is usually the right way to go. So it's just my thought.
If you, so, so when you say plan, you mean the response to the fiscal review report?
This here.
Yeah. No, to, to be very clear about that, I have not engaged formally in any, in any way the, the CAOs of any other towns or municipalities in, in working through this. Not the municipalities, because I think there are, although there are some areas here where I'm sure we would, we would readily agree, there are some areas where we will, we will readily disagree.
But I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but are we, we're, 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 we are a town and a municipality, it's two different entities, I can understand that because it's two different formulas and two different funding when it comes to roads and streets and, and infrastructure. So would that be, would that be somewhat of a problem between them and us? Sharing, sharing the document?
No, we'll share the document. So, so to answer how we'll share the document going forward.
I think it's a great document.
Has not been shared.
Yeah.
It has not been made public, because ultimately it has to be, it has to be owned by the town, by the council.
Yeah.
You know, right now it's just for conversation.
That's correct.
Once you, once you adopt a document next week, then that will be forwarded to UNSM. And as, as I mentioned earlier, we can also send it out directly to, to other municipalities so that they, they can get it.
When does it have to be in, Jeff?
The fifteenth of December is the deadline to get them.
They're kind of close.
Yeah, but, but there were only sixty days to work on here, right? So I, there's no way I could have had it ready for the municipal council.
No, no, I'm, I'm not saying that, but to, to share it to the other municipal unit.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the process is that all the responses from all the municipalities are required to go to UNSM. UNSM, Betty McDonald, has committed that they will all be available on their website.
Okay.
So if, if there are fifty-four responses, fifty-four responses will be on their website. And the fifty-four responses will be then forwarded to, to government. Now, what they do with that from there is, my understanding is it's to go, to be reviewed by the minister and his staff, and then to be sent back to the working group to have another look at, I don't know. You know, I don't know what the process is going to be.
When you say working group, who's the working group?
So, so when, when fiscal review was, was first initiated, there was a working group that was established that, it's back in one of my first slides, that was made up of municipal elected officials and deputy ministers. The, there was a group under the working group that, sorry, that's the steering committee. The working group was municipal staff and other Department of Municipal Affairs staff who worked on, on the analysis to give information to the steering committee that ultimately forwarded the report to, to the government. The government put it out for consultation. So I, I don't know what the process is, but the process, from the point we make our submission and the adoption, the minister has, has his, it's his prerogative to choose what he, what he chooses to, to implement. And in, if past history, I'll just say what the past has been, is that, is that Town's Task Force, the Fair and Equitable Funding, those things, these things have not been fully implemented. And they, we keep coming back to the table every few years to talk about the provincial and municipal relationship and the fiscal issues. So until somebody does a, a, a bold enough set of, set of changes to actually solve the problems, we're going to keep doing this. And my hope is, at least, well, my hope is, in, in trying to provide a response here, is to try and shine a little bit of a light on, on what some of the possibilities are to deal with the, the underlying issues that might help us, help us all as municipalities in terms of viability for the long run. You know, I hope, and, and, you know, if I didn't hope, I guess I'd be, I'd be pretty sunk, but I, I, I hope that the, the, the recommendations or the responses will get, will get fair consideration, and, you know, we'll see where it goes.
Deputy?
A motion in, in the committee to move forward for approval at the council meeting.
Go ahead.
Sorry, I, just before you get to a motion, I want to come back to a question you asked a little bit earlier. So I had prepared, there's a draft, thirty-three pages, document that was sent out. So that would, that would be, I don't know. So that would, that would be our response, would be the 33 pages. I can extract from the 33 pages and from the presentation, the very specific recommendations that are different from what is in fiscal review, and kind of put those in, in the front as an executive summary. But that will, that would be the form it takes from, from my perspective now. I guess I would, I would be welcome and, and available for any conversation or presentation of those, of those recommendations. I just don't know who's going to be, who's going to be interested. You know, I, I, I am available to, to discuss this, but I, I can't, there's politics that needs to be done here. And I hope that other towns will even read it and consider what it can mean to, to, to the future. I mean, dissolving is not the answer. It might, changing boundaries may be part of the answer, but it's not the full answer. And I'm hoping that they'll read and consider and, and advocate for at least some of these, some of these recommendations.
So, go ahead.
I'm sorry, your worship.
No, that's good.
I just, um, like, like I said a few minutes ago, I, I want the other municipal units and the UNSM to receive our response, your response constructively, and, and, and think about it as you have. I know the amount of time that you've spent on it, and, and I'm just looking for some sort of, wondering if a preamble or your final thoughts as a preamble, you know, in response to the consultation sessions, to, so that people will take it and look at it more, rather than just sort of pass it off, slough it off. I want, I want a really open, serious look by the right, all the right people. And, and Pam is a person who I think can work, I think, work with you in, in coming up with that, and, and on behalf of our council. At this point, and I just, at a certain point in time, I asked a question earlier, is a motion in order at the appropriate time this morning for consideration and hopefully approval at our December meeting, televised meeting?
First of all, I already did a little bit of the pre-work to basically, I'll, I'll be blunt, to basically say, this is coming, that, that our CAO has, has put the pedal to the metal and, and really taken a close look at this. So I had that conversation with the minister already, as well as, because I want it to know, too. Are we just doing all this and it just, I knew it wasn't going to fall on deaf ears, but, but the whole piece is that, that they are going to take a look at it. I, I also, as I said earlier, because I, I don't, and I could be way off base here, but I don't think that everyone is going to put forward such a comprehensive evaluation or, or recommendations, that it, that it will be seen. And I, I can just go with my gut and say, I, I really believe they're going to take a good, close look at it. From my point in, in this seat, and actually on UNSM board, I'm, my piece is to look at the fairness and, and viability. And, and when the political piece, it's, it's, it was difficult enough for the CAO to do what he did, but when the, the political piece comes in, and actually, I saw it at the Rod Grant, where it turned into, it's, it's, um, I think what happened is when they start to post numbers, when they start to post the numbers, it turns into winners and losers. And that's not what we're after. Trying to turn an entire province around, and that's really important. In the scheme of things, how do you all, how is it fair to everybody? And, and so for my voice, it'll, and it'll be a strong voice, it's basically, when you're doing it right, that's the example that has to be followed. And, and so that piece will be loud and clear from this seat, not just representing us, but, but, you know, towns, towns in general. I don't, I don't know if that helps you at all, but this is not, I, I can tell you, Jim, that this is not just going to fall on deaf ears.
To be seen as a, as this report being a, a red herring, and, and I want it, it's, Jeff has done a fantastic amount of research and, and thought, and I just want it to be received positively. And, and, and as much as we can, implement some of the changes that we have suggested or that Jeff has put forth for discussion.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. It's just, you're not getting on television, but your voice is being heard. Who else had their light on? Councilor Dawes? Go ahead.
Oh, I thought, uh, Councilor.
No, but the lights come in or, the lights come in order, so you're on.
All right, all right. Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to say that, uh, yes.
Thank you.
Jeff, thanks to you, we are going to be one of the very few, very, very few municipalities that will, uh, have responded. And I think just that alone will make it, make, make you, us, more recognizable, thanks to the help of our mayor, speaking on our behalf as well. But I also strongly believe that just as you, uh, put the town on, on, on today's radar many years ago, when you began to fund our amortization, that is now, I, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that, that was a very, a very strong example that you set and a precedent that you set. And that may just be the, what's the word I'm looking for? Help me, anyone jump in? That may just be the, the rule of thumb that everyone is going to adopt in the future. And you're having put all your time and effort into this, I think, I think you, you will have set another prime example and a precedent. I truly believe. Thank you for your work that you have put into it. That's a lot of time.
Thank you. That's, that's kind, but I, I.
Don't talk me down, because I believe it.
No, no, I'm just going to, I'm going to say, I'm going to say this about a council that, that sat around the table back eight years ago when we started that. They made the decision, right? We just provided advice. And they made the decision, and you can imagine if I asked you next month to increase the tax rate by 25 cents.
I have to leave now.
Yeah. That would be a tough decision. They took that tough decision. It was the right decision and has proven to be the right decision. Uh, so, so, you know, as much as the advice is, I think, good. Uh, it takes, it takes a little bit of bold, uh, action on behalf of politicians to make those things come to life. And that's no different in this report. It will require bold action on behalf of politicians, both locally as well as provincially, to, to make a difference. So it's just advice until somebody acts on it.
Do you need anything from us today?
Uh, you know, you could make a motion to recommend yourselves, and I just want to say this, is that, is that this, this whole, you know, I gave you, I gave you the draft response, and I've given you a presentation, and, you know, now I'm putting you in the awkward position of saying, you know, go ahead and disagree with me. You know, it, it is a bit awkward for you guys, I can imagine, that, you know, you're presented with a bunch of information, and I really, if you, if you disagree, say so, right? Because it is your response that goes to government, not mine. And, and so if you want to make a motion, you know, a motion to accept this draft to go to council, or you may want to consider it more and hit council with no motion on the table, I would prefer you go with a motion on the table. It can be this, or it can be some variation of that. But I would prefer a motion beheaded to council so you can be thinking about that. And I apologize if this puts you in an awkward position.
It doesn't, because that's why committee of the whole.
Yeah.
You have time to think of it, about it between now and then. Go ahead, Councilor.
Thank you, worship. Well, we had this last week. We summed it up this morning. Those who had it probably stated it a little bit and stuff. So, your worship, just a thought, and with the rest of the colleagues, would it be not warranted perhaps to go into a, a council meeting now and recommend this now, rather than, than later, and just give a summary at the, go into a special council meeting and put it on now, so we can put it on the website and to our other sister municipalities, and just give a brief briefing on the December the 11th meeting?
Okay.
It's either now or December the 11th. What, what's the difference between going to a special meeting now and December the 11th? The, the public is being, being told now, and you could always, always give a brief summation of what we've done at our committee of the whole. We usually do anyway, but just a thought.
I, you want to speak to that? Because I don't, I'm, I'm not prepared to, to do that yet. Although I agree with it, I'd love to see the whole package, the preamble, the, go ahead, CAO.
Well, that was my only comment about that, is what I'd like to do is, is add the preamble to this. Tidy, tidy it up a little bit. No, the recommendations won't change, but the, the wording around it, the adding perhaps. The recommendations are complete, but I want to throw the executive summary on, I want to throw the preamble on. The deputy mayor asked what the preamble might look like, and I think I'm going to borrow a lot of words for the preamble from, from Ray Ivony and, and the One Nova Scotia Commission, because I think that puts it in context. That's part of the, part of the inspiration for trying to do something bold and different.
I just didn't want to hold things up.
No?
If we didn't have them, then we should.
I would say, I would say make, make a recommendation to, to, around the recommendations, make a recommendation to committee hall about the recommendations and responses, and the actual document I will prepare and circulate with the agenda for the December 11th meeting.
Deputy, go ahead.
I then would like to move a motion that we adopt the discussion surrounding the 43 recommendations of, of, of the report and the response to the, to those 43 recommendations.
Is that sufficient for you?
If I, if I might suggest, rather than adopt the discussion, adopt the recommendations. If you were talking about my.
I want to adopt the recommendations.
Adopt the recommendations as recommended by staff.
Good. Did you have your light on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Can I have a second, or?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, motion carried. Take the rest of the day off. Motion to adjourn.
Not with pay.
Yes, with pay.